Risha Sina, followed by Kevin Yang. Oh, they're not. Sorry. Okay, Risha? Please take the table in front of you, or in front of us, I should say. You may begin after you state your name and your address.
My name is-
Sorry, Lisa.
My name is Risha Sina, and I live on 21 White Ave. I just want to start by saying good afternoon. I'm a junior at South. I'm also on the Lion's Roar, and I've met a couple of you in kind of a journalistic capacity. But today I want to talk to you in a completely different vein. Forgive me, I'm a little bit nervous. But I'm a part of the group Students for Teachers that wrote the sheets that were handed during, handed out during the South and North Baptist School nights, and the pamphlets that were distributed in the high schools. More importantly, I've been a student at NPS since kindergarten, and in these 11 years, my teachers have made an incredibly deep impact on me. Starting from kindergarten, Ms. Sheeney, who's here today, nurtured my love of reading and gave me her old books. In middle school during the pandemic, I lost a lot of family members, and my seventh grade history teacher, Ms. Wilson, would sit with me and supply me with tissues during her lunch period. In high school, I've had the privilege of having a lot of really great teachers that both excite me and challenge me, and I could keep going. I could tell you about the difference my fourth grade teachers made, my sixth grade teachers, my club advisors, my electives teachers, my middle school sports coaches, and they've all made an incredible difference for me. So over and over again, year after year, teachers go above and beyond, not just for me, but for every student in this room and outside of it. And that's why we want a contract that truly reflects everything they do for us. Because they don't do it just because they have to. They do it because they care about us. And right now, it doesn't seem like you guys care about them. I understand that there's a broad range of things that you have to consider when you manage a budget. I understand that schools are part of a greater city budget, and that you have to consider other parts of the city that need investment. But from where I'm standing, that's not your job. You're the school committee. Your job is to serve the schools, to serve the students. And what's best for students right now is not shortchanging our educators. It's not undervaluing, disrespecting, and investigating them. Because at the heart of it all, teachers are what make NPS special. Beyond test scores and facilities and rankings, which are important, no doubt, teachers are what make the school system stand out. And Newton Public Schools has fantastic teachers. These teachers are the ones who make equity and excellence possible. And equity and excellence is why we are here today. The education we've received from our teachers is why we're here today. It's what empowers us to use our voices. So please listen to us now. Make investing in our education your priority.
You have 30 seconds.
Make investing in our educators your priority. Make investing in our future is your priority. Thank you so much.
You did very well. Thank you, Risha. As a reminder, our overall time for public comment will be reduced the more I have to pause to make these announcements. Apologies for that. Up next, we have Kevin Yang.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Yang. I live on 41 Champa Street. Dear teachers, students, and school committee members. My name is Kevin, and I'm a senior from Newman South High School. As my classmate Risha had just mentioned earlier, yesterday was the first public appearance of Students for Teachers. Across Newman North and South, we scattered 2,000 pamphlets asking students a simple question. Why are the roofs leaking? Why are my teachers stressed? What's up with this contract? In a digestible bi-fold, we provided students a straightforward way to get up to speed with the negotiations. Our goal was to start a conversation. And it worked. The cafeteria was abuzz, web traffic went up, our Instagram following grew 12-fold. And so last night, as I sat at my desk scrolling through the recent followers, I smiled at a familiar name. Mary McDonald. Mrs. McDonald was the kindergarten teacher every kid wanted to have. Her ladybug colony was always the healthiest. Her classes were always the first to clean up, and her storytimes could have won her a Tony Award. And as I sat at my desk last night and saw her name, those countryside memories resurfaced. Because while it had been 13 years since kindergarten, she was still there, still teaching, still doing the good work. Mrs. McDonald is why Newton is so great. Mrs. McDonald is why our education is world-class. Now, it's just, it's not just educators who have dedicated decades to NPS that make Newton so amazing. It's also the new hires. Take, for instance, Mrs. Fiddler, a recent graduate from Brandeis. When my bio teacher posted indefinite leave due to a health emergency, she was the weary student teacher who stepped up. In a week, she took on teaching three sections of unruly, chaotic ACP honor students. And she executed like a champion. In the limbo state without an instructor, my class had fallen behind by three units. By the end of the year, we were ahead by one unit. Teachers like Mrs. McDonald and Ms. Fiddler are the reasons why NPS is so great. They're the late-night graders, the early-morning risers, the ones who spend weekends at debate tournaments or afternoons answering our most pressing questions.
You have 30 seconds.
Our educators are why NPS is so great. So yesterday, I posed a question to the students. But today, I want to ask you a question. Do you still care? Because if you do, then bargaining in good faith, working alongside our teachers, not against them, should be a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Up next, we have a remote speaker. Stephen, do you see Joe Louise Allen?
She's coming in.
Thank you. How's it going, Stephen?
She's there.
Okay, Joe Louise, if you are speaking, we cannot hear you. We'll give it one more minute, and then we will circle back to Joe Louise. All right, Stephen, please.
She's unmuted, but she's not there.
And I will move on to John Curley. Joe Louise will return to you at the end. John Curley, in person.
Hi, John Curley, 64 Apache Road in Bellingham. I've been an employee of the Newton Public Schools for the past decade. When I first came to Newton, friends and former colleagues would always remark how lucky I was to work here. You know, and I'm so proud of the students here tonight. You all are the current and future voters of Newton, and I hope you all remember what's happening here in these contract negotiations because you get to elect who represents you on this board. Listen, I don't want to be here tonight. I'm tired. I'm tired because since the last prolonged contract negotiations, a lot has happened to my family. We welcomed our second child in February of 2020. Shortly after she was born, she was diagnosed with cerebral palsy. As any parent of a child with a disability can tell you, there are a lot of unplanned and lifelong costs. Therapies, doctor's appointments, surgeries, et cetera. Fast forward a bit to shortly after celebrating our daughter's first birthday, my wife said to me the sixth words that will haunt me for the rest of my life. "Hey, will you come feel this?" That moment started our still-ongoing two-and-a-half-year journey with advanced-stage breast cancer. No one plans for cancer, especially not at 38 and with two young kids at home. Another financial catastrophe. Fast forward to 2022, our son was struggling in school, his mental health rapidly deteriorating. We needed to get testing to prove to the school that he warranted an IP. More unplanned costs, but we figured it out. We did what was right for our kids and our family. Now, my story is just one of many of the members of the NTA who show up day in and day out for your children and your families. It's past time you start showing up for us and ours. You know, I mentioned I'm tired, but what I'm the most tired from is the nonsense that we don't have the money. It's insulting to those of us who truly don't have the money. It's insulting for those of us who get up day after day and have to figure it out, have to make the hard choices. You know, Merriam-Webster defines gaslighting as the act or practice of grossly misleading someone, especially for one's own advantage. The way that this school committee continues to dish out lip service to the NPS employees, particularly Unit C members, is toxic. And it certainly doesn't make me feel lucky to work here anymore. But you all should feel lucky that we still do.
Up next? Up next, we have public Patrick Song.
Patrick Song, 41 Janet Road. I'm here to talk about this $50 million in free cash. We need to see more advocacy from the school committee to deploy those funds for the system that's much needed. And I want to direct my remarks to the mayor. I understand matching duration. I'm an operating finance professional. I get that we need to match one-time uses, one-time funds, recurring funds, recurring uses. I get that. I think everybody gets that. Well, the system has one-time needs. We have, we're still, there's a lot of families that are still suffering from, kids are still suffering from pandemic learning loss. We should set up a tutoring program for that. That doesn't have to be permanent. We can even, we should be funding like the Forrest Mann renovation or Lincoln Elliott, using more of the funds that have been earmarked for that. Use the free cash to fund that so you can free more money in the operating budget so that we can do things like restore the kindergarten aides, which was cut by this school committee. I understand because the mayor didn't allocate enough money. But that's a violation of the current contract. And we also need money to give a fair contract to the teachers. I heard something, I've been hearing rumors about something, and I got it from a reliable source this week, that the police chief is not renewing his contract, that he is leaving this town, which is very unfortunate. Because as a member of the Chinese-American community, we're very appreciative of Chief Carmichael and his efforts to find those series of home invasions and burglaries just a few years ago, and they end up catching the perpetrators. We have, in our new superintendent, we also have a superstar. You need to get her the resources to set her and her team up for success. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Stephen, let's try Joe Louise at this time.
I did get a text from her about three minutes ago saying that she was available online, so.
Okay, thanks, Emily.
Okay. I'm here. I'm here. I'm on video. I'm unmuted.
Please take up your, up to three minutes. Apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me and see me now?
Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Great. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. It's nice to see everybody. I am just so disappointed in the negotiations committee and the mayor for really being untruthful and offensive to our teachers, who are our most, our amazing, our biggest asset in the school system. I don't really have much to say tonight. I didn't prepare a lot of comments, but two things I'll share with you. One is that my youngest graduated from college this May. I had three kids go through the Newton Public School systems, but our youngest graduated from college. And in downsizing and making their room more hospitable to guests, I found a Lion's Roar. And you heard from a really intelligent Lion's Roar editor as your first commenter tonight. So you won't be able to see this, but I can just tell you. This, this Lion's Roar is dated April 26, 2019. That's almost four and a half years ago. And this headline is "NTA Negotiates Fair Contract for Members." It reads exactly, almost to the, almost to the, almost to the word. You can see this. What's going on today? I can't believe the same thing was happening four years ago, and you're still, you're still doing this today. Okay. The other thing I just wanted to share, because I hope you all got it in your packet, is that I created a petition on change.org, and it's about respecting the teachers, settling a fair contract, a COLA that meets today's economic situation. And I asked Lisa Mazzola to give it to you, and I had got 416 signatures and about 30 comments from staff, community members. So I probably don't have much more time, but our students are in crisis right now. I do not appreciate that the funds that the mayor has in either Free Cash or ARPA are one-time funds. We need to put mental health counselors back into the schools. And even if next year, you find out that you're in a budget crunch and you have to lay off people, our students are going to be hospitalized, increased suicidal ideation, anxiety, depression. This is all post-pandemic, and our students need services. And you can cut faculty and increase class sizes, and nobody's happy about that either. But it is critical that you use money, and do not hide behind, "We can't spend this because it's one time." Because you can, if you don't spend it this one time, you're gonna see, you're gonna lose students. There's gonna be more psychiatric issues. And, you know, that's really all I have to say. Wake up and please put money. The budget I was told is only a $4 million gap. So you can put a million or a million and a half dollars towards mental health supports in our schools.
Thank you, Joe Louise. Up next, we have Andy Dannenberg.
Hi. My name is Andy Dannenberg, 66 Fisher Avenue. I'm today reading a prepared statement by a Unit C member of the Newton North faculty. Though I am a former teacher and the parent of former students and a 40-year resident of the city, very much in support of the teachers' union. I was asked to share my experience as a Unit C member and how I've been impacted by both the inadequate wages and the minimal COLA. The non-competitive wages provided to our Unit C members requires that many of us, requires many of us to live paycheck to paycheck, even requiring some, including myself, to have a second job. Twice a week, after spending the entire day at school, I immediately head to my second job. Here, I work another three to four hours in a related field. I also work anywhere from three to six hours one weekend day each week. To further explain how insufficient our salaries are, I will break down exactly where my paycheck goes. I live in a neighboring city outside of Newton, where I live in a 600-square-foot, one-bedroom, one-bathroom apartment with my significant other. We split rent, rent, each paying $975 a month. Utilities, we each pay $100 in electric, $25 in Wi-Fi, $5 in gas, roughly $20 on laundry a month. Housing-related necessities equal about $1,125 a month. Other fixed bills include $110 for student loans, $75 for cellphone, and $530 total for car payment and insurance, plus roughly $80 in gas a month. These total to around $795. When adding all of these fixed bills together, I'm at $1,920. I currently have health insurance through NPS, where I pay roughly $300 for health and dental, bringing my fixed necessities to around $2,220. These fixed expenses are my entire paycheck. The current inadequate pay scale leaves me with $0 for food. There's no leftover money. If it weren't for my second job and additional assistance from my family, I could not afford food. Since I cannot afford groceries, I certainly cannot afford any unexpected events, such as car problems or illnesses. The current wages are insufficient. We deserve to be comfortable. We deserve to eat. We deserve livable wages.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Andy. Up next, we have Jillian Den, Jillian Den left. Apologies.
My name is Jillian Van Delft. I'm a licensed independent clinical social worker, serving in my ninth year as a meco counselor in Newton. And, you know, I just want to say you are uniquely in a position at this point to determine the quality of our lives. And, you know, I'm a Unit A staff. I'm just imagining what the Unit C staff are going through, listening to that story, but you're all in this position, right? At least in part, but probably in a huge amount because you had good teachers. Because you had people in your lives that believed in you, people in your lives that taught you the skills you needed, perseverance, people who met you where you were. And so this is basically what we're trying to do. This is the toughest our job has ever been, I'm sure, in any of our lifetimes because of the pandemic and other things that go on, right? This is the hardest it's ever been. And our job is to prepare these children to inherit this planet that we're destroying. That's not an easy task, right? So I'm thinking, we deserve not only to survive and have food on the table, we deserve to take vacations. We deserve to sit back. We certainly deserve to not need a second job. But just to throw out there, the second job, right? I think everybody knows, it's fair to say that one hour of planning or one block of planning a day is nowhere near sufficient to get the job done that we do. So you know, without, you know, without even having to say it, you know that we're doing this, we're doing this during nights, weekends, summer, vacations. We're always working. We're always preparing lessons and doing things, right? So if we end up in a situation that we have to have a second job, that's gonna affect the quality of our work. Because I'm not gonna work, you know, be waitstaff and come home at 10 o'clock at night and be worrying about planning another lesson for the next day. And to the extent that we pay money out of our pockets, everybody, we pay money out of our pockets to supplement curriculum and other things. So we'll work a second job to fund our current job? I mean, our, you know, initial job? I mean... I'm sorry. So... And I think at the, at the end of the day, we deserve, it's a noble job. And I think at the, at the end of the day, we deserve, it's a noble job. The world functions partially, or our, you know, our society functions in large part because of schools, right? Because of teachers, because we're turning out people who, you know, oftentimes are being treated as cogs in a wheel. We're like a species on a planet, no other species has to do all this nonsense just to survive. So we, we, you know, we do all this, we deserve to play, we deserve to go home and become someone, relax and not have to worry about, you know, where the food on our table is coming. But the other question I have is, is why now? I don't understand, why now? We just had a pandemic, things are harder than they've ever been, inflation is off the charts. The Fair Share Amendment, you know, passed. And there's this money floating around that we keep hearing about, why now? I just don't understand.
Thank you, Jillian. Up next. Up next, we have our last public commenter for tonight, Matthew Weiner.
Chair Strauss, members of the committee, Madam Mayor. My name's Matthew Weiner, 186 Oliver Road, I'm the father of a junior at South and an eighth grader at Brown. And I'm not affiliated with any group or organization. And I come to you today because parents I'm speaking with are upset that the city has somehow found itself in the middle of a budget crisis that's threatening the crown jewel of Newton, our public schools and the teacher, the teachers that serve them. This is not a crisis that was unavoidable, indeed, it's a crisis of the mayor's own making. To be fair, when Mayor Fuller took office, she inherited a $600 million unfunded pension obligation. But this was not a crisis, it was a problem and one many municipalities face. But in seeking not only to address the gap but fully fund it 10 years early, city leadership prioritized arcane actuarial policy over the school needs today. Following three years of inconsistent remote learning, declining enrollment and increasing needs among the Newton student body, as you've heard. Indeed, when members of the city council presented a series of alternate scenarios to fully fund the pension system five years early and raise as much revenue as the override for our schools, it was flatly rejected. Let us be clear, the subsequent failure of the override this spring was a vote of no confidence, not in our school system, but in the city's financial management. Voters who watch multimillion dollar homes built in neighborhoods understand that Newton is not cash poor, at least right now, it's leadership poor. Which brings us to today, when the NTA is again fighting for a fair contract. Put aside the specifics of the contract. Teachers in Newton, long regarded as some of the best in the country, are being laid off, class sizes have swollen. And for the first time in memory, we have teachers in the region reconsidering whether to come to our school district. A district they increasingly see in disarray. Why? Because city leadership constrained our school budget, tying the hands of a new superintendent who most parents I know are very excited about. Perhaps worst of all, this manufacturer crisis preys upon seniors' worst fears by suggesting that the education of today's children comes at the expense of their own secure and dignified retirement. By pitting seniors against parents and children, it threatens the sense of community that has always defined Newton and its ability to solve problems like this. Madam Chair, of course, we need to fund our pension system. But virtually all of us moved here for the same reason.
You have 30 seconds.
It's world-class school system. Its ongoing success is not simply one of the city's myriad objectives, it's not simply a city service, it's our single most important obligation to ensuring the future of the city itself. But these institutions are fragile, as we see in public universities across the country. When we allow the reputations of our schools and its leadership to fray, these institutions lose the ability to recruit the best talent and that's very hard to get back once it's lost. So my message is clear, parents are paying attention, not somebody to this committee, but to all our city's leaders.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, everyone, our public comment is now closed, we appreciate hearing the perspective of everyone who spoke. I'll take a short recess here to allow those who would like to leave to file out quietly, please. Thank you for coming. Aisha, would you mind closing the, actually, Sue, thank you, appreciate it. All right, so. Hey Christine, could you close the door behind you, please? Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, everybody, we're going to continue on, our next item is the consent agenda. Here we have approval of the revised policy EFD for charge and collection of payment for school meals, detailed in a memo from Amy Mistro, our Director of Business Operations. We also have approval of the FY24 School Committee Calendar and Agenda Items Advice on Forums. Here I do want to flag one small change to the start time of the October 11th meeting at 7 o'clock to accommodate the mayor and the superintendent's attendance at the start of a community meeting on interrupting antisemitism and hate in our community. We also have approval of the buffer zone vote, detailed in a memo from Casey No Miller, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Katie Hoag, Chief of Data Research. Approval of international and overnight's out-of-state field trips, detailed in the memo from Superintendent Nolan. And approval of the Newton South High School class of 83 one-day liquor licenses, have fun. And approval of the draft minutes from September 11th with a special nod to Lisa Mizzola for being all caught up on minutes. All right, so does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Go ahead, Chris.
I just have one really quick question on the buffer zone.
Yes. So, all right, we'll, we'll pull that out and we'll vote on it and allow the asking of the question in that process. Any other items to be pulled out of the consent agenda? Emily? No? Okay. So is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
We accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, Emily, is there a second? Thank you, Rajiv. We have a motion and a second and we will now take a roll call vote on all items except the buffer zone item which has been pulled. Ward one.
Yes.
Ward two.
Yes.
Ward three.
Yes.
Ward four, yes. Ward five.
Yes.
Ward six.
Yes.
Ward seven.
Yes.
Ward eight.
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller, Cole and Paul, I just want, sorry, Mayor Fuller, I apologize. I just want to note that your audio is a little muffled. So just correct next time. Okay, so the item that was pulled from the consent agenda was the approval of the budget of the buffer zone. Chris, would you like to tell us your, what was your question?
Yeah, this should be super quick. I had asked this question last time, I just don't think we, we got an answer to it of, as we're voting on this, does it make sense to include the other two adjacent districts to provide us maximum flexibility as, you know, the, this thing evolves?
Anna?
So we did discuss this. This is on, but we did discuss this and the feeling was, given the low projection right now, that this was sufficient, but that we can bring this back at any time, should that number expand, to change the buffer zone again.
Perfect, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure it was discussed, thank you.
Great, thanks for flagging. Let's take a roll call vote on the approval of the buffer zone as detailed in the memo from Casey Miller and Assistant Nolan, Assistant Superintendent. Sorry, let me start that again. Casey No Miller, our Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Katie Hoag, our Chief Data of, Chief of Data Research. I still can't get used to that new title. Do we have a motion to approve the buffer zone change?
We approve the changes.
Thank you. Chris, do we have a second? Thank you, Rajiv. Ward one.
Yes.
Ward two.
Yes.
Ward three.
Yes.
Ward four, yes. Ward five.
Yes.
Ward six.
Yes.
Ward seven.
Yes.
Ward eight.
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller.
Yes.
All right, thanks, everybody, that motion is passed. Up next, we have the superintendent update and I'll turn it over to you.
So there's two memos before you, one is the follow-up memo from questions asked last time and this is the follow-through. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but for the public, there was a question about how many students opted into the new BYOD. Would parents have access to upcoming panorama screenings? What lessons for disability awareness and inclusion were being included in the first six weeks of school? What is the $37,000 of disability awareness curriculum monies in the budget being used for? And then there was a question about SRO biographies and trainings that SROs receive. And so that is in your follow-up memo there, I'm happy to answer any questions about that. And just for the public, all of these items are posted publicly. Should you too want to dive into the qualifications or biography of our SROs or whatever else? The second.
Any questions for Anna? Go ahead, Rajiv, Rajiv has one, go ahead, Rajiv.
So thank you for the follow-up on my question regarding the funds and what they're being used for. So I did want to point out, they're being used for purposes we hadn't actually authorized. And then in terms of what's being listed, given that it's a curriculum that's at the elementary school, unless we're going to be putting child labor to work, job coaching is a surprising addition to, to what we'd be using the funds for. So I, I appreciate the response. I don't think it necessarily gets to what was intended. We can follow up later, not in a school committee meeting.
Thanks, Rajiv. Others? Go ahead, Anping.
Anna, thanks for sharing the, the first, answering the first question, where students, parents receive those results. I understand this is the first project and that to me is very meaningful and significant project. So even though parents will not be able to see the results, I hope that NPS will do some kind of outreach work, educate the community and parents, let them understand this is a project and has a lot of meaning and encourage parents, if they're interested, they could submit some questions and provide some kind of, you know, the point person to answer the question, whether talk to school principal or psychologist, guidance counselor, so. I think, you know, me included, we'll have a lot of questions about this. And this is a time when a lot of concern about social emotional learning, so again, I appreciate this major efforts to do this, but hopefully that we will have a bit more education in committee. Thank you.
Thanks, Anping. Anna, please continue.
Sure, there, just to respond briefly, there is an actual night in your calendar where we will talk about mental health screenings, what's coming up. We'll talk about the YRBS data, guidance counselor caseloads. As a backdrop, Committee Member Bresky asked, could we revisit that, it was tabled in the spring. So you'll actually get a deep dive into all of that, including the K to eight curriculum pieces, intervention, how is that working? And how will that panorama screening fit into all of it?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, go ahead, Emily.
Don't forget to send it to the table at some point. Two things real fast, one is, I really appreciate the update in terms of the bring your own device. And I was actually very happy to see that we actually didn't need to buy any additional devices this year, that's great. So that's one, and the second thing is, just to quickly follow up on something Rajiv said. I think it would be good for us, once budget season comes around, to understand what the actual breakdown was for the $37,000, because there's a lot of stuff in there under the 35, $37,000 and just with an eye towards next year and having a better understanding, a deeper dive into what this looks like. I also appreciated the links that were in there to the different, you know, curriculum that's currently being done. Definitely not apples to apples, of course, to the UOD curriculum, but I was happy to see that, that at least we're doing that as well, so, thank you.
Okay, so the second memo is, is fresh, it's fresh update of what's happening right now. I sent out a memo to families today, just sort of summarizing, I'm trying to do 22 schools in 22 days, trying to be every, at every school and try to meet most of other people in the buildings, that's harder to do, obviously, at the larger schools, but trying to be there. I'm talking to a lot of kids, looking at beginning of the year routines, class sizes, traffic patterns, composition of classes, facilities and the conditions, cafeteria use and how's school lunch looking. So lots of different pieces of feedback and it'll all come into my entry plan that's coming your way in October, so. I'm really excited to see. And just the sheer joy in the schools and the level of engagement of students. I, I mean, as the New England Superintendent's Association President, I'm in a lot of states and a lot of schools. And I just have to tell you, the, you know, all the things we heard tonight are true. It is a magical place to go to school in the Newton Public Schools. And not magical like hocus pocus, like systematically strong teaching, strong relationships with kids, kids on a mission, kids growing, kids finding their passions. And I just want to say how much I appreciate all that the unit members do, all that the leaders do and all that the parents do in order to have that amazing back and forth. That relationship that's necessary to make a strong community. I'm absolutely delighted to let you know that student voice is front and center in our Superintendent's Secret Sauce podcast. And it's so fun to get to know the young people and to highlight all the excellence that's around. We'll have some adult interviews too, we have some of our Secret Sauce podcast people back there and it's nice to see them again. I've also been blessed with an intern in Nora Linson, who's a South High School senior, who's helping to produce those for me, so thank you Nora for making the whole thing turn out so well, so excited about that. You'll hear later about the elementary literacy curriculum rollout. And I do want to celebrate Newton North High School being designated a Special Olympics School of Distinction. Only 22 schools are given that distinction within the Commonwealth and it means a lot of different things in terms of inclusion, advocacy and respect practices for unified athletics, but for inclusion of students of all types and all needs into everyday athletics and everyday interscholastic competition. The school is honored as a fully inclusive school and recognized for hard work and dedication to including all students in athletic programs, so very, very excited, congratulations, Newton North. I do want to congratulate two of our leaders in the district, Renee McCall, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and Lisa Gilbert Smith, our Metco Program Director, who have both been accepted into the state's prestigious Influence 100 Superintendent Training Program. In the past three years, we've moved our administrators of color in the state from 4% to 11% using this program. This is my fourth year as a mentor of women in that program and I'm thrilled to have Dr. McCall and Ms. Gilbert Smith leading us in this program. The program includes collaboration with districts across the Commonwealth, leaders from across the country and the Department of Education. So congratulations to them. If you are a Newton North family, especially a family of an athlete who plays on the lights at night, you know there's been a delay in the permanent installation of the lights. But asbestos removal is complete and the project is moving towards completion within the few weeks. In the interim, we've rented lights, so no, there'll be no disruption to interscholastic athletics. Across all of our schools, open houses and back-to-school nights are in full swing. The word on the street is that you as parents and community members have been out in force and that's great. It's great to see those numbers come back after the pandemic when for so many schools, people were not attending those events. So I encourage you, if you haven't attended yours yet, please do, it's a great way to get back and see your teachers, see your kids' learning space and also find out what the curriculum is for the, for the year. All of our schools have been participating in school safety trainings and updates and we as a district in partnership with And we, as a district, in partnership with our SRO, fire, health and ambulance partners, um, had a um, half-day workshop to refresh our expectations for safety and health within the school system. Uh, those um, principal trainings um, concluded with um, case studies and sort of on our feet, um, practical um, applications. Like, so if that, this happens, what do you do as a principal? And then those trainings go um, out to the school buildings. We just want to assure the public that um, in a time of peace right now, uh, that we train all of the time for uh, worst-case events and evacuations. And while that's unpleasant to think about practicing, make sure that students and staff know what to do in times of emergency. And finally, I just want you to uh, know that we're trying to bring the district goals to life. And I just want to point out to the school committee members, in particular, the second page of this memo details um, community forums that you have requested and that I have also heard the desire um, to have in the community about school safety, restorative practices and the SRO program, a Metco Program Overview, and also a family and caregiver math night and mathematics program overview. So that would be like a K to twelve walkthrough mathematics. There's been a lot of questions about what we do and don't do. And it would be our pleasure to showcase and explain what we're doing there. Um, finally, school committee, you have some homework. Um, you've asked me for some class visits and some site visits and I put a schedule together for you. Um, and so those are listed there. It's a combination of uh, helping us with our long-range facilities planning um, discussions. So they are sites that you have asked to see because you haven't been able to access them easily. And also because we have excellent teachers and I want you to see them in action. And I want you to see them with me so we can talk about instruction, high-quality instruction, which is a major part of our core mission. And then finally, um, publishing just to the community at large, um, part of our hope is to develop a profile of a graduate, a vision for what we want every Newton student to have when they leave us um, at the end of their time eh, with us. And uh, we need a community um, collaborative process in which to develop that. I've listed the nights this winter when that will happen. And we're looking for volunteers, which will come out in email blasts to the community, direct invitations to faith communities, business partners and colleges. Um, obviously, staff and leadership students will be a part of that process as well. Um, looking to have as many voices as possible in that vision process. That concludes my update.
Thank you, Anna. Uh, any questions or comments about the second half of Anna's update? Go ahead, Rajiv.
I appreciate the entire update. I especially appreciate the last three items in terms of community outreach. And I know a number of these topics have been raised over the past couple of years. And I'm glad to see us taking them on and, and being transparent and inviting the community to provide feedback and input. Um, in fact, the only question I have is around the district goals. Do we know what time those meetings are? Because I certainly would like to attend them if possible.
Um, for the uh, I would assume they'll be at seven o'clock. Yeah. So we want the public to be able to attend. Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Rajiv. Great question. Uh, anything, any other questions? And welcome, Max. Good to see you again this year. All right. Um, thank you, Anna. Moving on, we have a quick-ish update, a verbal update on negotiations that I will share on behalf of the Negotiations Subcommittee. Last week, we had a total of two collective bargaining sessions with our state-appointed mediator. In these sessions, the mediator, Ed Tridniki, meets separately with the school committee team and the NTA's team. His job is to usher the parties toward agreement and he does so in a neutral fashion, by relaying different perspectives or concerns regarding each team's proposals. He also relays any responses or counter-proposals between the parties. During our negotiation or our mediation session last Thursday, the school committee team concentrated on our proposal for our Unit C aides. As previously reported, in Newton, we are very proud of the fact that our Unit C salaries are extremely competitive. In fact, Newton's aides lead all other districts in statewide salary tabulations. Nevertheless, we are thinking about ways to offer this unit reasonable additional compensations. While I can't get into the specifics of our proposal, the negotiating team wants to make it clear that we are working to tap into our available resources to think creatively about how to make a fair and reasonable offer and still operate sustainably within the NPS financial forecast. This is also true of our approach to all of the NTA bargaining units as well. We are doing our very best and we maintain absolutely no ill will or animus to the counterparts in this negotiation. NPS educators are our friends. They are our colleagues to those of us on the team who are educators ourselves. Dr. Nolan, I'm looking at you. And they are the trusted caretakers of our children. So believe me when I say that we know the value of our educators and we hold them in the highest regard. Full stop. We are working in good faith. We are working hard. This is a process. We will get through it. And in the end, there will be a signed contract on the table. Of that, I have absolutely no doubt. Now, as I mentioned at the top of our meeting, yesterday, we did receive word from the Department of Labor Relations Commonwealth Employment Relations Board, the SERB, really weird name, that they have determined that the NTA engaged in a strike by boycotting the opening day convocation, a clear violation of state law which prohibits public employees from engaging in strikes. In a particularly compelling, concurring opinion, meaning a separate opinion that agrees with the result, but for different reasons, SERB member Kelly Strong stated, "There are few things that are more basic about the employer-employee relationship than the job requirement that an employee must show up for work, AKA, report for duty, and report for such duty at the location as determined by the employer or in accordance with the CBA in the case of a unionized workforce," end quote. The decision by SERB also shed light on the NTA's silent meetings as part of their Work to Rule campaign. The SERB held that while the particular silent meetings under investigation here did not rise to the level of a strike, that this conclusion could change where employees remain silent after, quote, "clearly communicated expectations regarding the level or type of participation required in any given meeting," end quote. Therefore, it is incumbent on this community, of this committee, rather, to closely monitor whether silent meetings become impermissible withholding of employee services. We certainly hope they do not. But this was an unfortunate turn of events and we look forward to getting back to our normal collegial, collaborative, highly professional workplace environments that we all value here in the Newton Public Schools. Any questions from my colleagues? All right. So continuing on, we have a budget resolution kindly drafted by Emily Prender and reworked equally kindly by Chris Bresky. A resolution to submit to the city council as they are considering additional funding for the Newton Public Schools. Chris, could I ask you to talk about the resolution that you would like us to consider?
Right.
And Lisa Mazzolo's about to pass out some copies.
Thank you. So um, after some discussion, uh, and myself registering my uh, my, my slight caveat that, you know, resolutions have only so much uh, to carry. Um, I think it's the consensus of this committee that we need additional funding to provide the services that, that we need to provide to our kids. And that's, that's plainly available, available information just by looking at our budget process last year and, and, and the year prior and the, and the, the very difficult decisions we had to make. Um, so I think it, it, it's in the interest of the committee to put forth a resolution so that um, Dr. Nolan may be present in front of the city council to advocate for funding. And uh, therefore, excuse me, time for my medicine. That was not the resolution, by the way.
Couldn't have planned that any better if I tried.
If you could, if you could strike that quack from the record, please. Uh, before I move, we adopt the following um, resolution. The school committee believes that the Newton Public Schools require additional funding to provide the services that our students need and deserve and that our community expects. We support all efforts of the city council and the mayor to provide additional funding to the Newton Public Schools.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a motion following your?
Sorry, I move. We adopt that with resolution.
Thank you, Chris. So Chris has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Emily, for seconding the motion. Uh, any discussion from the members? Hearing none, seeing none, will now take a roll call vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four, yes. Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight?
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. That motion, the resolution passes unanimously. Um, so a quick word about where we'll go from here tomorrow morning. I will submit that resolution to uh, the city clerk for the clerk to share that with the city council as a whole. All right. Um, continuing on, up next, we have a memo from Liam Hurley, our Chief Financial and Administrative Officer, and Regina Moody, our Director of Transportation, um, requesting the um, sorry, I've lost my place in my notes. Uh, requesting additional yellow bus for private school transportation. I knew there was a request in there. Hi Regina, good to see you.
Hi, May, Madam Chair. Just a reminder and a refresher for everyone um, watching for the first time. Uh, we have a detailed memo here from Mr. Hurley and uh, members have submitted questions to us over the weekend, which Mr. Hurley will answer in the course of his discussion now. But this will not be a wide-ranging presentation on buses or private schools. So if you have questions, the questions should come forward.
Thank you, Dr. Nolan. Good evening, everyone, and just wanted to, to uh, thank Regina for being here. Regina and Kristen, you know, the month of August and September, incredibly busy time for transportation and transporting more than four thousand students and what they do on a daily basis is unbelievable. If you go into that office, you basically have to make an appointment to try and even talk to Regina, the, the phone is going off. So um, this request tonight is for um, an additional bus to Newton Public Schools. It's outlined here. There's some specific questions I just wanted to uh, respond to that came in. Um, the memo is here and I'm going to answer these questions, but I wanted to specifically answer these questions that came in. It says, the uh, the question is, the memo states that NPS goes above and beyond the state requirements for transportation. Uh, what are the mandatory obligations for private school transportation for NPS? And what are the services provided beyond those required by state law? So just to step back, I talked, I think, this past fall about the state law for transportation in general being K to six, more than two miles. Newton and many districts do uh, transport and provide those services uh, beyond that state law. For private school, you know, whatever you do in your town or commu, or city, uh, you're supposed to provide basically the same extent or what they say, that, you know, the same rights and privileges. Uh, from my understanding and talked to, talking to other Masbo business managers as well, um, in Newton, we essentially transport students within their districted zone. So if you live within the service zone and that's your assigned school, we will transport you to service. Um, if you are out of assigned school and some students are out of assigned, you actually need to, you need to get transportation yourself uh, to that school. This does not, uh, this is not counting any student who might be on a van or an IEP transportation. For our private school students, we actually will pick up a student in a different part of town and transport them uh, across the city uh, to uh, their uh, private school that they are attending. So that is what I mean by that we are doing something, I think, beyond what we are even doing, beyond the same extent that we are required to do for a public school transportation. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, um, that that is what we've been doing. That has been our practice for, for quite some time.
Forever.
Forever. So that has been a practice that we uh, have been doing. Um, s- the next question was, if NPS were to restrict its provisions, uh, of private school transportation, only that required by law, would we still need one additional bus this year, uh, and the related hundred and four thousand dollar expense that I put in there? And Regina and I went back and forth on this, but really the answer would be no. If we were only doing that, we would not need this other additional bus. However, the current number of buses, we, I just want to kind of predicate, we still are using these private school buses for our other routes. So it doesn't necessarily mean that there's an overall budget savings for us. It does mean we could use these private school buses, we think, um, basically to get more of our students uh, on a bus, have a little bit more capacity. We've got some crowding issues at some of our schools right now. Regina's made a bunch of moves this, uh, already this year, sent a lot of flyers, moved a lot of things around the first and second week of school. So it would, it would free up some capacity and some time for us. But to answer that specific one, I don't think we would be before you asking that, that question. Um, the last one is a hundred and four thousand dollars, um, include the cost of additional drivers as well as the use of the bus. So again, the annual rate is six hundred and fifty dollars. That's a daily rate, excuse me. Six hundred and fifty times a hundred and eighty days per year is a hundred and seventeen thousand. That's the annual cost. I've prorated that for basically starting in October. That gets you everything. That gets you the driver, the maintenance, the fuel, the insurance, the yard they park in, any breakdowns. So that daily rate covers everything. So those were essentially, I think, the, to respond to the specific questions that came in. Um, Regina, did I miss anything on those responses?
I don't think so.
No? Uh, so open that back up to you.
If I could just add, this will be a recurring cost, however, if the ridership remains the same. And this will be um, paid this year out of the transportation reserve account, but it will need to be laid into operating in subsequent years.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you, Liam and Regina. Uh, questions from the members? Any additional questions? Go ahead, Emily.
Quick question. Um, in terms about, of, of usage beyond the private school routes, is there any way that this bus could possibly be used to help with after-school sports or other places where we have, um, you know, through, through, no, no one's fault in any way, shape or form, and a bit of a pickle? So.
Um, it, it's not gonna help with the athletics at the peak time that we're experiencing the biggest problem because biggest need is at the same time that the athletic buses are needed. Um, it will be used in other areas, though. We have some crowding issues that I can work on um, around the private school route.
Thank you.
Mayor Fuller?
I want to say thank you to Regina. I know I'm speaking for all of us. Um, it's an extraordinarily difficult job. You've done it so well for so many years. We're blessed to have you at the helm and doing this, so just.
Never a dull moment. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ruth Ann. Uh, very good comment. Um, go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Um, so I, I might have misunderstood this based on what you just said and I, I apologize this, maybe just I need clarification. So, the level of service that we're providing to private school students currently exceeds effectively the level of service we provide to NPS students in that we will take them anywhere in the city versus, you know, you just go to your, your home school in um, for an NPS student.
Correct.
Okay. And if we were to not provide that incremental level of service, we would not require the incremental bus at a cost of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars?
If we were not, if we were to basically provide the same level of transportation that we're doing for our public students, we would have very few private school, we would have some private school riders, we believe, you know. So if you are in a, a district, you live in that district and your private school was in, was within that district, we would transport you there. Um, but I don't, we do not believe that we would need this additional bus at this time. Uh, particularly, one of the routes particularly is not, we're not able to pick up any more students and it's running late, basically, very late.
And so presumably then we would lose a lot of those private school riders who are paying bus fees. And what would sort of the net impact of all that be from a budget perspective?
So we don't have.
I, I apologize. I, I, I kind of misunderstood this as I read it the first time and you clarified some things as you were, you were speaking now, so.
The majority of, I would say the majority of the private school passes that are issued um, don't require a fee. Um, because by state law, we have to transport students in grades K to six, less, uh, that. Um, because by state law, we have to transport students in grades K to six, less, uh, that reside more than two miles from the school. Um, the majority of our private school kids are sixth grader, younger, and we're transporting from every corner of the city to schools that are basically on the outskirts of the city. So the majority are over the two mile distance. So not a huge impact.
Some interesting memos there as well, one from 2009 as well, if you want to do a little more research. And it was also that, you know, so there was a couple of memos in there, uh, a city solicitor actually been asking Desi, um, kind of for some clarification back, uh, more than a decade ago, uh, for some information about that.
Okay. We're, we're not voting on this tonight, correct?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris. Go ahead. Go ahead, Rajiv.
Thank you, Regina and Liam. So I, I just wanted to make sure I understood in terms of private school students, are, are these primarily out of district placements? They're not. So.
They're not placements. They're, um, they've chosen to not attend the MPS school in their district. They've chosen to attend private school within Newton. So it's not a placement.
So schools like president's school. Schecter, schools of Montevernia, they are not students that we have placed, um, through our placement process and IP. These are, these are residents, citizens of Newton, uh, that have decided to, uh, go to a private school within Newton.
But we still have a responsibility to bus the students to the private school that their parents have chosen to place them into.
And that's what this memo tries to lay out is that our, our responsibility is essentially the same extent of the transportation that we provide to our public school students. And what I'm suggesting here is that we're actually doing beyond that right now. That, that's more adification for you folks and, uh.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I thought this was related to, you know, students being taken to learning prep or something like that, but it's not that at all. Okay. Much more clear now. Thank you.
Thanks, Rajiv. Go ahead, Anna.
So when this comes before you for a vote next time, you know, that is what you have to decide is are you, are you keeping with that practice? Seems like that's been the practice for a long time. There seems to be more children of that age attending and needing transportation. So you have, this is a recurring cost. So I just want everyone to understand that you vote it. It's a recurring cost unless enrollment drops and people do not go to private schools, which is a challenge I will accept.
Any other questions, comments? Great. Thank you so much, Regina. Pleasure to see you. And Liam, always, always a pleasure to see you. All right. Up next, we have a, um, rights and responsibilities handbook. The final red line changes. Here we have a memo from Superintendent Nolan, Toby Romer, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education and Jill Murray Grady, General Counsel.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. So the, um, Mass General Law, um, governing handbooks, um, and, uh, Stephen Toby is there in the waiting room and Jill Grady, our counsel, um, will join for this. Um, expects that you'll review our, um, handbooks for secondary school. Um, a nice innovation about the Newton schools is that you actually put all your student-related policies in one small handbook and it's unified for K to twelve, 22, which is delightful, I just want to say. So you don't have to read 23 different handbooks. You just read the policies related to student discipline, which has to be voted by you because it becomes policy. That's when we can use it with students. Um, so I'll let, um, Jill take you through the changes with Toby singing backup back there. Um, so, and if there are questions from the memo, um, but in general, um, these have been vetted by council. We seek your approval. And these particular changes really align already revised pol- with already revised policy that you reviewed and voted in prior years. So it updates the handbook to be in compliance, but Jill.
Yeah, I mean, just in a nutshell, the legal piece of it is, um, that, uh, we look at the, well, not the legal piece, but we review it every summer. Um, Carolyn Campo does a great job of assigning the tasks to everyone. My job is to look at the polit- largely the policies and any changes in law that might impact, um, our handbook. Um, and some were, um, if you recall, there was a, a change in the discipline law. Crown Act came out. So those are the types of things that we look at, um, make changes to for relevant purposes here. There was, um, a change in student discipline, which is largely in the policy, but really isn't a whole lot in the rights and responsibilities handbook. It just has to do with what administrators need to consider before they uh, potentially exclude a student from school. Um, but we did update that nonetheless. A lot of these changes, unfortunately, we couldn't accept some red lines. So all the formatting ones you're looking at, um, a lot of them are formatting, some of them are some pronoun changes, um, from his or her to their. Um, and then I'm going to kick it over to Toby for the other non-legal substantive changes that, um, were made largely by the secondary administrators, including the deans, um, in response to such, such things as AI.
Uh, yeah, you can see, uh, there's a, a significant chunk of the rights and responsibilities handbook that covers, um, our rules of behavior and discipline for students. Um, and a number of the changes there as well as in another part of the, of the rights or responsibility handbook to make more explicit our expectations around academic honesty and that including, uh, uh, appropriate use only of, um, uh, AI technologies, which as we know, obviously have exploded in their applications in the last year. Um, so those are, those are the, um, probably the most significant changes that we, that we do see here. Joe mentioned some of the other procedural changes, uh, that were necessary to this section based on a change in state law. Um, there was some, uh, some good reorganization and, uh, clarification of the actual disciplinary codes, both those listed beginning with M for mandatory and D for discretionary. Um, so realigning those, making sure those that apply differently to our younger students than our secondary students are clearly differentiated. Um, and again, just some clarity around wording, um, that uh, makes it clear, uh, what, what the expectations are. There's always a few cases that come up each year where something unique or novel happens that sort of falls into what an unintended gray area based on the current wording in the law. So some of the rewordings, excuse me, not the law, but the, the code. So some of the rewordings are just to capture a space that was not intended to be left out of that based on some particular thing, um, that may have happened. Uh, so I think those are the main ones. Um, there's a few other areas summarized in the memo, uh, that Jill and I shared. And I think that, um, that captures it. These are typical changes that we do make each year um, as we continually, uh, try to evolve and improve, um, the, the language here to make it more, uh, accessible for students and families and also more accurate and keep it up to date, up to times.
Thanks very much, Anna, Jill and Toby. Um, are there any questions for these guys? These folks? I hate guys. Yes, go ahead, Max.
As is always true when I make any sort of comments, obviously I'm not as well-versed in policy or what the school committee can and cannot do. All I can do is represent what the students think and what I've heard in the schools.
Hmm.
Um, and one thing that I was just interested in bringing up was there are, there's a lot of student concern around the prevalence of, the unfortunate prevalence of racial and, um, other, other hatred, um, kind of events of those, those, that kind of hatred, whether that's in bathrooms or on wrestling mats or carved into furniture. And something that has discouraged several students is that you, you hear about it happening, but then you don't really, there's not, there's not a lot of follow-up. Um, and I, I think that that's partly because it's, it's not legal or there's some, there's some kind of complications there. Um, but if, if possible, the student body would definitely appreciate some kind of follow-up on actions taken against these, these hatred, these hateful acts so that they don't happen again. Not sure if there's anything you can do about that, but if you can, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, so you're right. You hit the nail on the head. There's some legal and confidentiality laws around what happens to a particular student, right? But I think what you're getting at more, and I think Toby and Anna can take this back, is the communication to the community, if there's an incident that's out there publicly and what communication is there, a follow-up, knowing that they can't say so-and-so was disciplined, but more this is what we're doing in response. We've investigated it, we've looked into it and that kind of thing. Which I've seen, but it sounds like not as much as, as maybe it's happening and people would like to know more. Is, am I rephrasing that correctly?
No, that's, that's perfect. I, I wanted to clarify a little bit. We, there's definitely a lot that is very evident in terms of sort of educating and there's often a lot of assemblies and speakers that come to the schools. More so the, the, the lack of communication comes with the, sort of the actual kind of legal actions, which I, I think there's a lot of, that's exactly where the complications lie. But sort of more about the, this is the investigation, this is how the investigation is going, that, that sort of thing. Um, whether or not that's possible.
Yeah, I could, I could jump in.
Oh, go ahead, Toby.
No, you go, go ahead, Anna. I'm sorry.
So I can just certainly tell you that all the time when these things come up, um, reports are made. We actually have to report them as hate crimes to the local police. Then there's usually review of videotape, which takes forever to try to find. And many times there's, there's no finding because we cannot actually find out who did it when, right? Um, but if there is a situation, um, with any credible, um, located source, that can also go to the police and it can also, depending on the situation, it can go to the FBI. It can go to NEMLEC, which is our regional law enforcement. Um, so it really just depends on how credible the situation is. Um, I can't speak to what post-event communications were, are like yet, but, um, my tendency is to over-communicate on those pieces. I really want to thank you, though, for mentioning what you just said, which was that you're actually seeing in the, the student body. When there is an incident, there's follow-up education. So I just want to say that again, because I, I hear a lot in the community, like, uh, nothing is done to educate anyone about this. When I'm hearing the school staff take that pretty seriously. Um, it doesn't mean that one assembly or a series of lessons or books read is necessarily going to transform mindsets. But the Newton schools are really doing a lot, particularly to combat issues of hate and hate symbols um, around racial discrimination, um, disability discrimination and antisemitism. Toby, I don't know if you wanted to add to that.
Yeah, I think, I think you nailed the, the dilemma that we face when we're responding to these issues, Max, and that we would like to be able to give more, um, more details often on the responses, but legally we're, we're not allowed to. And we do want to protect the privacy of, of students involved as we would for any, anyone in that situation. But still give enough information to, to satisfy folks and help them understand how we're doing things. It's a really tricky dance each time we work with our legal groups. Sorry, that's me dinging in the background. Um, uh, and we work with our legal advisors and work really closely with the principals of schools to try to get as much information as we can out in those situations. But it continues to be a challenge and we continue to hear this feedback from, from you and students and families that they would like more information. Um, so we, we're working really, really hard on how to do that better and, and again, run into some of those boundaries. When we did redo our, uh, nondiscrimination protocol in terms of how we investigate and respond to any of the kind of incidents that you mentioned, um, just two years ago. Um, a lot of work was done on what the guidelines, um, are for, for that. Um, so I think we've improved a lot, but again, trying to get to that point where folks get the right amount of information is a challenge. So I appreciate the question.
Thanks, Max. Thank you. Other questions? Go ahead, Anping.
Thank you. Um, this is a very important document, a legal policy document. Uh, I just wondering, in the past, when my kids in school, we got a hard copy, the beginning of school year. Do we still send the hard copy to every family as used to be?
But I think they're available, but people don't use them and that's a lot of money and wasted paper. So we largely put it online, but it is translated, I mean, Toby, I'm going to kick this to you. I know it's translated into many languages. That's why we're always getting the reminders to finish up our edits by certain dates so it can get translated before, before school starts for everyone. And, um, I'm not sure, I think paper copies are available or certainly can be made available by printing them out. But it is on a few different places online, um, on our website and I'm sure it's elsewhere.
Toby, how do we get a paper copy if we're parents?
If, yeah. We, we provide paper, we provide a limited number of paper copies to each, each school and each school office, but we don't distribute them to every, every student, every family anymore, given the ease to access the full text document, um, in, in whatever language you prefer. We do translate to six, or I think seven are of our most common languages. Um, and so we, we ask folks to review it online, uh, but we do have, we do have a limited number of copies available to each school. Uh, a family could certainly request that, uh, from their school and we could provide it if they were interested in it.
I, I, I would suggest to put those copy at some kind of, um, you know, well-known place. So when parents have asked for that, uh, you know, mostly probably never use that, but just sometimes question comes up. So this would be nice, almost like encyclopedia, you check, you know, uh, sometimes the kids missed homework a couple of times and teacher would, uh, kind of little bit penalize them and then parents were not happy. Then you have the policy. Let's see what, what policy will say. And also in terms of translation, do we have kind of standard translation version or it's kind of Google translated? It's not really 100% official kind of translation.
I, I don't think it's Google.
No, we get a full, we get a full professional translation of the rights and responsibilities.
That's much better. You know, Google certainly, huh, translation i- is improving very quickly, but still. Uh, but we have official translation version. That, that's very nice. And again, you know, um, I hope that the school PTO or principal office will let the parents know for those some new immigrant families and sometimes they know very little about policies. And I, 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 you know, personally I got some questions and I said, we have to refer to the, you know, this handbook. Otherwise, I cannot remember all those detailed, uh, policies. So that, that's very nice and I hope that the school will encourage parents, hey, we do have those copies if you need that. Thanks.
Thank you, Anping. Go ahead, Emily.
I have a small silly thing. On the second page of the handbook, it says that Eva Thompson is the Title IX Coordinator. Is she the Title IX Coordinator?
Yes, she is.
She is.
She is.
Excellent.
The coordinator.
Okay.
This very specific role doing intake essentially, but not investigations.
100% understand. I was just, um, surprised and now happy to see that.
Yeah, no, we won't let her go.
Good. I think that's, that's really good. And then just one, one more quick thing, um, which, uh, Toby, I, I think is a co- a separate conversation possibly, um, which is around the 10-day out-of-school, um, suspensions, being unexcused absences, what long-term impact is our discussion about absences and, and, um, just outcomes and, and like what that looks like from an outcomes perspective, not for now.
Yeah, I, I believe that's state, uh, state law or state attendance guidelines, but, um, I appreciate that question.
That doesn't mean it will never will. So the question is, how does a 10-day suspension impact unexcused absences and excused absences and the academic impact and recovery obligation?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Emily. Go ahead, Rajiv.
I, I think this is primarily for Toby. The, um, the reference to the use of AI technologies u- under the academic honesty, um, section. Are, are we doing anything at the high schools, especially, I guess, especially at the high schools, potentially also the middle schools? Uh, in terms of general do's, don'ts, what's, what's allowed, what's not in terms of generative AI or, or other assistive technologies that may not always be allowed?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. And actually Stephen Rotendi, um, uh, helped facilitate some terrific professional development as well as policy and procedure work that influenced some of what went into this handbook as well as other guidelines and, uh, best practices we've been sharing with teachers. Um, so we've been, we've been on a roller coaster journey of learning for our staff around generative AI and then, uh, pushing out as well, learning materials, uh, for our students and really thinking hard about what frameworks to use, um, and not, not just, not necessarily just say no, but in what ways we also want to prepare our students to be, um, fully technologically literate in the, in this new world that is, is emerging around us and be able to harness the strengths of, uh, that generative AI without allowing it to prevent the kind of learning that we need to happen. Need, need to happen at the basic skill level as they're learning, learning all the skills that AI can make so much more easy and efficient for well-educated folk. Um, and so it's a real, a real challenge for us, but trying to figure out how we embrace it, how we make sure we're knowledgeable about it and be able to, um, en- ensure that it's not misused and not, not used in a way that undermines the learning which we're responsible for in our students. So the short answer is yes, Rajiv.
Thanks, Rajiv. Uh, any more questions for Toby, Jill or Anna on this topic? One more for Max.
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly, very briefly reinforce what Toby said and confirm that the what has been given to the teachers and professional development is definitely making its way to the students. I think almost every single one of my teachers, at least from in my experience, has outlined very specifically how they will how the how they will determine whether your anything that you've written is was used AI um and what the consequences will be uh very clearly. So I do think that 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 is succeeding, at least in my experience.
Max, you're making us feel really successful tonight. I just want to appreciate that.
Thank you for the comments. That's really helpful. Um, and thank you to Toby, Jill and Anna for um giving us all of this good information. We appreciate it. Jill is going to stay seated. Uh, we are going to continue on to a discussion of the year-long policy update timeline. And here Jill, our general counsel, and Anna have a memo before us for reference.
Sure. Um, so as you know, there's policy subcommittee that I've been working on with various school committee members over the last several years, starting with um Ma- Margaret Albright, who really got the project going to redo our our policies because they barely existed. Um, and now, as you know, things change very quickly. Laws change, circumstances change, technology changes that requires um revision, review and revisions of different policies. Um, I've been uh meeting with Kathy Shields and Anping over the summer. I we took a hard look. Um, there was a couple of internal policies that have come bubbled up that we wanted to take a look at that came from administrators and largely the Mass Association of School Committees sent out a list of they take a periodic review of them and decide which ones are obsolete. It's a lot of just collapsing and eliminating ones that aren't necessary anymore or obsolete. Um, and so as a result, there's multiple policies that we want to bring before you, and Anna um bringing her experience from her former district and being a really good organizer suggested that we basically space them out and plan out when we'll be bringing them to the school committee to keep us on like a track and a record and not just all of a sudden have one that we have to shove before you very quickly or, you know, have too many at once. So we just divide, I had started with a chart with Kathy and Anping of ones that were on our 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 radar and just kind of charted out basically by month. As you know, we come do a first read, answer questions about any changes that were made, and then if if unless there's some significant feedback, we'll incorporate some minor feedback and bring it back for vote or consent agenda if there isn't any or however that that plays out. Basically trying to split it up by um. I tried to group them together in a way that made sense through December because undoubtedly there'll be more that come. There's already a couple that we're already thinking of that aren't on here yet, and um we're going to continue our policy um subcommittee work. Um, so there might be, there will be ones that will be added on. All of a sudden in October, we'll, you know, send it in the do- it'll go on the docket um of one that or two that may come up that we want to put on, but that's essentially it. So this is just kind of giving you a preview of of the process and and the plan.
If I may, Madam Chair, it also gives the public the year-long arc of what we're going to be reviewing, so there's no surprises and, you know, whoever's really excited to come talk about retirement of non-instructional members being removed from our handbook, they can, they know when it is. You know, so all of that is just by way of um inviting the public to know what we're doing.
Great. Thank you. All right. Uh, questions for Jill on the kind of the overview, the layout that we have here? Go ahead, Emily.
Hi. Two thanks. One is, um, I'm glad that it's going to be a collaborative process with the subcommittee and the members of the school committee who are on the subcommittee. That's great. Um, the second thing is, um, we did not have a first read of the uh public comment, which I think was appropriate. Um, having seen the document in advance, I think that was appropriate, so.
I thought it was um edited and going to be supplemented to change it to October because it was taken off the docket. That was an oversight between Lisa and I as to whether that document was updated.
No problem.
This is a uh organic document that we will be, it's in Google, so we can change it, so we'll we'll obviously change that date because it's not accurate.
Thank you.
And your new superintendent has First Amendment trauma from the public speaking process in NADAC, so she's like, can we please get that on there?
Any other uh questions or comments for Jill and Anna on this issue?
Great. Welcome back, Kathy.
Thank you, Jill.
We're all throwing a very massive party in our heads for that, Jill. Um, so thank you, Jill and Anna. Um, up next, we need to take a vote on the FY twenty-four system-wide goals. We have discussed and reviewed these goals several times, including through the summer and at a recent meeting, which I can't remember if it was the last one or the one before that, but we've we've seen these goals many times before. Uh, is there any discussion prior to someone making a motion on approval? So at this point, I'm going to look for someone to make a motion on approval. Uh, go ahead, Paul.
I'm of approval of the system-wide goals.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, there's a motion. Is there a second?
A second. I'm sorry, Anping, go ahead.
I'm going to second.
Thank you, Anping, for seconding Paul's motion. Uh, we have a motion and a second, and once again, opening up for any further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, let's take a vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four, yes. Ward five, yes. Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight?
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Uh, turning to our next item, it is a is it the literacy curriculum? Sorry. Um, so here we've got a motion from Superintendent Nolan. Uh, Renee McCall, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Deanna Liu, our Literacy Curriculum Specialist, and Anna, I'll toss it to you.
Yeah. Um, no motion involved here, just a summary. Um, very important time for Newton Public Schools, um after a long process to select a new literacy curriculum for um elementary schools. Um, Renee McCall presented to you in the spring about what was chosen and that whole very public process. And we have some good community partners um who constituted the um Literacy Collaborative, Parent Collaborative, um who have still been having robust discussions with us, just lending their expertise, but also asking good questions. And so with their assistance, we've put together this frequently asked questions document, which um you know, some of the folks on here are actually bona fide experienced literacy specialists, so they have like finer points, questions than the average mom and dad maybe. Um, but it's all in here, and this document will continue to be expanded as we come across frequently asked questions that parents will have and maybe teachers will have as this new curriculum becomes known to us. I just wanted to update the community about what those um conversations were, and I also wanted to give just a teaser, if you will, of the new dyslexia screening expectations from the Department of Education are outlined here. What will happen for parents, though, is a specific detailed letter with the ins and outs of how that will work and how parents will be notified will be sent to all parents through um Aspen. In addition, parents will receive their results through Aspen, and this is all coming right before parent conferences so that we get this the documents and you can have an actual conversation with your teacher about it right away. So that's the thinking. Um, anytime we're putting a new curriculum uh deployment out there, there's going to be a lot of questions, even among the staff, right? So you can't know everything about every piece of curriculum the first week that it rolls out, and we are in the first week of that rollout. So the trainings, um, as I mentioned to you last uh meeting on September eleventh, happened the week of the eleventh, so all of our first grade teachers and all of our second grade teachers were trained across the entire district as well as a cross-section of three grades, three to five teachers who either did the pilots last year, were brand new to the district, and their entire PLC was brand new. So it didn't make sense to train them on an old curriculum than a new curriculum. So there were some some particulars that uh made that happen. And there's ongoing support um through coaching, through Dr. McCall's office, and an outside organization, which will also be helping us to do instructional walks in two parts. One, an integrity walk, so how well are we deploying the actual curriculum? And second, an instructional quality um walk that will look at are our teaching targets on track? What are our pedagogical practices that are aligned with best practices for the science of reading? And then, of course, I just want to remind everyone that our teachers didn't just learn to teach reading by getting this curriculum. We hired them because they are excellent and they know how to do that. Um, they're certainly learning new strategies and new curriculum, but we still have the teachers who know how to teach reading. Can we always learn more? Absolutely, we can. And the t- district has spent two years deploying decodable texts and um doing trainings for folks in the science of reading technology and techniques to teach phonemic awareness and phonological awareness. So and we also do comprehension, and we also do all these other parts of reading, but that's really where the the hot topics are in um in the literacy. So this is just an FYI document. I wanted you to know it's here. It's going on the EL website, I mean EL website, the Teaching and Learning website and a few other places. We'll continue to work with parents and add to this as we go along.
Great. Thank you, Anna. Any questions for her on this item? Go ahead, Rajiv.
Anna, thank you for setting up the FAQs. I think that's a great way of getting the information out. Um, and and I think you're encountering the the benefit of having a lot of world-renowned experts living in Newton and the challenge of having a lot of world-renowned experts living in Newton in terms of the the level of questions that that your team is getting. So first, I'm I'm hopeful that we're able to strike a balance between responding to questions and and moving this through, which I know is is a significant task. I I do have a question about the screening, um, the dyslexia screening, because since the guidelines have changed, do we know if we will be switching from three times a year to two times a year, or is that something that you and your team are still working through?
So the DUSI requirement is that you um that it is sent home and a letter is sent home twice a year. We will continue to screen three times a year, which is what we have been doing in the Newton schools. And I should also say there's a portfolio of literacy assessments that are done depending on the emergent needs of the child. So there's eye-ready benchmarking three times a year. There's also use of the DIBELS assessment. There is the early bird screener. So there's a a whole portfolio, and that's actually what's in that letter that's about to come to all the families um that will tell them, when are those things and when will you be communicated with?
Thank you, Rajiv. Any other questions? Okay. All right, everybody. Thank you. Um, continuing on, we have a discussion of the capital improvement plan and list of priorities. Here we have a memo from Liam Liam Hurley, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Financial Administrative Officer, Stephanie Gilman, Director of Planning, Project Management and Sustainability, and David Stickney, Director of Facilities, before us. Liu, again, Liam.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. We've got um Doc Josh Morse here as well.
Josh, building commissioner. Hi, Josh.
Uh, Josh is living and breathing this capital projects, I think, twenty-four seven at this point. Um, you obviously have this memo. Ja- I I told Josh we wanted to keep it brief. Josh, do you want to give a one or two-minute quick overview on CIP and then just open it up to questions? You're we we're going to get into long-range planning after that, but I think it's helpful. You're you've you've been immersed in this so so detailed and and all these projects. I think you can answer a lot of these.
Sure thing, Liam. Excuse me. So um, thank you very much for having us tonight. Uh, the school committee should have received, I think, last week, uh, the the September version of the Comprehensive Capital Project Update. I've been doing that every other month for uh about a year and a half now. Uh, that also goes out to our our listserv of about ten thousand residents in Newton um as well as through multiple social media platforms. So we're we're working hard to make sure everybody stays updated. Um, from a big picture standpoint, uh, so October nineteenth is our big day for Lincoln Elliott. That's when we'll be opening our general contracting bids. Um, and then, of course, working with the executive office to move uh into the contract phase and then getting started on construction, uh selective demolition as soon as possible after that. Uh, the countryside school, we are moving forward through now schematic design, uh, and soon we'll be submitting to the MSBA and working towards a project funding agreement. Uh, we have a solid site plan worked out. Uh, we're we're laying the early foundation for, no pun intended, uh, for our site plan uh approval process, which will occur this fall. The Franklin School, uh, just slightly behind the countryside school from a process standpoint. Uh, we're currently working through uh with the School Building Committee the uh preferred option matrix. Uh, this is a matrix that the school committee has seen before on previous projects where we use criteria to weight and rank uh various options. We're still studying new construction and addition renovation options at Franklin. Uh, for new construction, uh, there's several options, um, both in locations where the current building is as well as on the field. Um, and some of those options would allow the Franklin students to stay in the current facility while a new school is built, if that's a decision that's made, um, whereas others do not. So that's something that we'll continue to work with the Franklin School Building Committee, uh, Designer Review Committee and Community on in the coming weeks. Uh, the Horace Mann School Project, so we are uh back up and running and moving forward swiftly over there. Um, last summer, when we took a pause, uh, we left it in a very strong position, so at this point, we're doing refinements to the site plan. Um, and we recently had a really good meeting uh with Mark Nardelli and several folks from NPS and my team and the the project team to really look at uh trying to simplify our our approach for the modifications to the existing building. Um, and really, the goal there was to deliver everything that uh we committed to to delivering, but doing so in the least intrusive manner possible, because that will be an occupied project. It doesn't mean that that work in the existing building would happen with students there, but it does mean that we need to leverage our summer breaks to get that work done, so the less intrusive the work, the easier it will be for all of us. Um, that's the Horace Mann School Project. Uh, we are continuing to to work to support uh the School Committee on the Ward and Underwood Initiatives. Uh, we're working with Perkins Eastman to obtain additional information um and help inform the decision-making process. That will take some time, but we are, we're moving forward on that front as well. And then, of course, we've got a host of smaller projects uh that I'm happy to answer any questions on. Um, and I'm happy to talk about any of the projects that we haven't started yet that are in the CIP as well.
Thank you, Josh. Um, before we I turn it over to Mayor Fuller, who would like to make a comment. Um, I just want to apologize to you personally, Josh, uh, for I understand you survive on very little sleep. However, you do need some sleep, and a request was made to have this presentation a little earlier in our meeting, and I apologize that I forgot about that request. We'll correct that next time and you'll get a little bit more sleep. Um, how you keep it all together, I don't know, but I'm amazed.
No problem at all.
Two comments. One is that um there's an exceptionally collaborative and communicative relationship between Liam Hurley, Stephanie Gilman, David Stickney and Josh Morse and his team. It's kind of um a thing of beauty, and I want to thank all of them um for that. I also just want to um, like the team at NPS, Josh and his team are quite exceptional. Josh didn't even mention that one of the things he did in the last six months, even with everything else that was going on, is with uh the help of the NPS team, he evaluated kind of all the major systems in every single um NPS um school building. And we we documented them and we added a hundred and eleven projects to the CIP. Um, most of, I think maybe even all of them fall outside of the next five years. Um, um, but they're in there and listed, which is really important to have a really thorough and well-developed um CIP. So I think Josh, um, in particular, is project leader, but he leaned on other people for help, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Fuller. Any questions or comments for Josh or Liam? Uh, go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Tamika. I I've mentioned this before, but I think it's worth mentioning again that thanks to the work of all these folks and the the funding provided by the mayor and the council and the people of Newton, this is truly a once-in-a-generation set of construction projects that are going on. And we we are catching up for for decades of inaction over the next several years, and the fact that it's been handled so smoothly and expertly is really something to be noted, and so I just wanted to note that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Um, any other questions or comments from the members? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I'll say thank you, Josh. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I'll say thank you Josh. Have a good night. Sleep. And thank you Liam. Appreciate it. Let's see, finally tonight Liam's going to stay here again for a long-range planning timeline overview for this school year.
I am and I'm not even letting Josh go to sleep yet. Sorry Josh. Josh has been involved with this too.
Oh dang.
Part of the team, sorry.
I tried. I tried.
No problem.
And I don't know if you have any comments on this?
Yeah. So the memo before you direct takes from the last meetings that we had on long-range planning and now gives you a calendar of when you can expect the deliverables that you requested. So this is just an FYI, but, and also my thanks to Josh and the team. Those assessments the mayor just spoke about allow us to make some recommendations to you around how to talk about long-range planning and how to prioritize. So back four meetings ago, I told you I'm going to give you a set of analytical frames to look at, to make some decisions. Josh has some analytical frameworks to make some decisions about health and life and safety systems. I'll talk to you about like the political, social, human resource and long-range planning and financial scenarios. These are the data sources that you said you needed in order to be at that place where you could make some directional decisions for the school system about things like neighborhood schools, size of schools, and the number of schools. So this is the plan and if there are missing pieces, we need to know now so that we can get them going for you. And this is generally when we believe those timelines will be executed. With the caveat, of course, that with outside consultants, they're giving us ballpark ranges right now, but we will of course dock it with you and then get it on the agenda in a time where you have adequate time to process it. Did you want to add anything Liam?
Nope, that's it. The Perkins Eastman, I think we said February, we talked to them today. Actually, we're talking about March. So I think Anna nailed that well. Some of these, some of the consultants, I think things could move a little bit. So, but McKibben, I think that timeline I think is preset. But I think this timeline helps us kind of in terms of thinking about some of these items. And as Anna said, Anna was actually the one that went back and looked at the 2011 HMFH, just to give you what the school committee at that time and kind of what, which HMFH was kind of given as a guideline. I think it's helpful, at least to kind of some food for thought as we think about that. It was the caveat though, it was a different time. It was a growing enrollment situation at the time. We didn't have all those, you know, several new buildings in the pipeline. So it was more of a capacity, it was more of a capacity and certainly building need issue, condition issue at the time. But I think it's helpful.
Thank you. Questions from, go ahead Paul, then Rajiv.
Thanks Tamika and thanks Anna and everybody. It's a really comprehensive presentation and it's just what we asked you to do and you're doing it, which is great. I wanted to bring up one issue and I've talked privately to Anna about this a bit, which is, we had a chance to review the McKibben methodology and it does not include a calculation of the impact of the new zoning overlay that's likely to be adopted by the city to be in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. As I understand it, the latest version of that overlay would add about the potential for 7,300 by-right dwelling units. And I think unless we include that in some way in our analysis, the analysis won't be as credible as it might otherwise be. Now, in raising this, I fully understand that there's no known timeline for the development of those 7,300 units. But compared to the 30,000 or so, what is it Ruth Ann? 30,800 or so existing units, that's the potential for over 20% increase. And some percentage of those units will have school-aged children. And I want to make it clear, I'm not opposing the, in any way, the proposal because it might add students to the city. I mean, that's fine. That's, that's part of the growth of a city that we all expect. But I would point out that the City Planning Department can give details of possible by-right housing growth by, literally by the lot and the street and the precinct and the ward. So it's possible to build a model of scenarios that might affect the catchment areas of our, of our different schools or might directionally affect how we think about those schools. And so the question I have is, is there a way to incorporate some scenarios to give that, to give us that directional sense of what this new overlay zoning might mean for the school system?
Thanks for asking that Paul. So when you asked me that over the weekend, I got Liam right on it and the answer is?
So the answer Paul, thank you for this. The answer is yes, we can do that. We actually have been in touch with the Planning Department, City Planning Department, and they can get us all of that information that you suggested. I think, as you know and the committee knows, we typically, when we do our enrollment on our projects, we like, basically our rule of thumb has been permitted projects. This is obviously an exceptional time for the city of Newton. I know that they're looking at this. So I've been in touch with Dr. McKibben and he'd be looking for an additional $6,000, of course, to do this work. The quote right now to do the work is $35,000 for another $6,000. He has given us the outline of the information he would need, meaning total number of units, the timeline, market rate affordability, unit mix. And he would come up with a scenario or scenarios in terms of looking at what that impact for our enrollment would be. So my recommendation and knowing what this is, we looked at this, I think, a little bit back in 2018, 19, particularly in the Washington Street Corridor. And I think it was very helpful. At that time, a lot of projects still have not come to fruition from them. But I think given the place where Newton is right now, I agree with you. And if it's okay with the school committee, I think we proceed with having that type of scenario. We'd certainly have our kind of our base case, which is just permitted. But this would be a secondary piece where we would get from and working closely with Jen Kyra and Barney Heath and the Planning Department, Jonathan Yo, the city CLO, in terms of thinking about where and how these units are going to be built out. You know, in many aspects, I think many of these, these units won't be, this is a 10-year enrollment that he's looking at. Many of these units may not even come, are likely not to come to fruition. But I think it's worthwhile in terms of prudent planning to have that in there if that price meets your okay.
I would just say, prepare yourselves for Dr. McKibben to say that he doesn't want to do it, doesn't believe in it. And he keeps saying like density equals less population. So just know, you're going to get a big opinion about that for the cost of $6,000.
Thank you Paul. I'm sorry, was there anything further Paul?
Well, let's, let's hope that he does the analysis without letting his opinion get in the way too much.
Thank you. So I'll just share my perspective, which is deviating from our normal processes often leads to weird results. And to the extent that Dr. McKibben is comfortable in the process, that he's articulated and, you know, really standing firm that that process produces solid results. I think this will be an exercise that validates that to a certain respect, but also it helps to alleviate some public pressure points around this. So for $6,000, I imagine we will get a great amount of data additional, which might help shore up additional support for the work that we're doing.
Thanks Tamika.
Thank you. Any further questions for this? Oh, I'm sorry Rajiv, you did have one. Go ahead.
Just a quick comment. I'm pleased to see the Ed Center being included in the long-term planning and look forward to seeing what the thoughts are here. As I think Liam knows, my son's preschool was here and now his post-graduation program is here. So it's kind of coming full circle. But the post-grad program, which I think is one of the best in the state, like truly fantastic, has lacking facilities. As we say, they're, you know, they're kind of out in the annex and Liam and Dave Stickney and others have tried to make sure that they have reasonable facilities, but they're still not very good. So certainly putting in a plug for, for including this, this building in part of the plan and figuring out a better, a better home for community connections.
Thank you Rajiv. Okay, any, go ahead Mayor Fuller.
Well, I'm brainstorming about something. I don't know if this is a good idea or not. Key planning assumptions. Possibly add one more, which is a best practice that I think Josh with Stephanie's help has already started implementing, which is when we do major renovations, we include in the design, if at all possible, a location for a four-classroom addition. That's just happened in the last four, five, six years. It's really smart planning. And I think it's a very useful key planning assumption that we've thought about it. So just a thought.
So meaning on existing structures that do not have a four-class expansion?
Slightly differently. When we're doing, let's say, a Lincoln Elliott or a Countryside or a Franklin, we build the number of classrooms we reasonably anticipate, but we build into the design process where a four-classroom addition would be if we get a surge. And Josh, I can't remember where we've, I know we did for Lincoln Elliott. We're also, we've done it.
Yep. So we've done it for Lincoln Elliott. We're doing it for Countryside and Franklin. And the other thing I would just add on to that is, this is the other reason why we're very careful about making sure our core spaces in these buildings can support that larger enrollment. You know, so that if a bubble were to come up through, our focus is really just on the classroom addition, that the base building can support that increased load. What I mean by that is art, music, your gym, your cafeteria. If you size those to support the larger enrollment, you don't have a major building renovation. You just have a small addition.
Well, thank you Liam. Thank you Josh for real this time. Appreciate you both being here to answer questions for us. So with that, we have concluded the posted business for tonight's meeting. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, October 11th at 7:00 PM. We have several updates from our Business, Finance and Planning Department. And I would like to put in a plug for that community conversation, interrupting antisemitism and all hate in our community, creating allyship through understanding and action, which is happening from 6:30 to 8:00 in the War Memorial. Anna and the mayor will join Rabbi Ron Fish, Rabbi Steinberg, from the Anti-Defamation League, DA Ryan, the Newton Police Department reps and Rep. Ruth Balzer. It sounds like a very important and timely, much-needed conversation. So thank you to everyone from central staff and a big thanks to everyone who attended tonight. We very much appreciate it. Our meeting is now adjourned.